Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the flag salute. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA ten colon four dash six, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the record and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration building and filing notice with the city clerk. I hereby call to order the special public meeting on Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, in the Hackensack High School Media Center, one thirty five First Street, Hackensack, New Jersey, oh seven six oh one, at?
Six oh one P M.
Six oh one P M. Miss Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Miss Alston Balaputra?
Present.
Miss Amrahamsa?
Present.
Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Miss Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Miss Pringle?
Present.
Miss Harris?
Present.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
We have a forum.
Perfect. Okay, we're gonna go straight to public comments. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. One, if in person, a participant must sign the sign in sheet and be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. Two, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration during the public session. Three, all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. And four, all board and or acting superintendent responses to questions or inquiries shall be held until the end of public participation. At this time, public comments is now open. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Meehan, and I live in Hackensack. So I wanted to continue my conversation with the board regarding a few things that I've noticed, observed, as a former board member. So one of those things is there were flyers posted with the superintendent of schools endorsing candidates, political candidates, that were Democrats, as well as board members that were using their titles, President Maury Harris and a few others. I'm not gonna name everyone, but the president definitely should not be using the title to endorse political candidates. If you'd like a copy of it, I'm more than happy to send it to you. But clearly, the School Ethics Commission has stated you are not permitted to endorse any political candidates for your own financial gain and political aspirations potentially. So Cassine Gaines, who's an English teacher, who is also the president of the teachers' union, who potentially may become the mayor-elect, is a potential conflict of interest. So if the board supports him, then how do you negotiate a fair contract where there's supposed to be a check and balance of power? One of your major responsibility is to make sure that the board and their school district is run well. How are you going to do that? And if I offended anyone regarding your family ties to the school district for over, I think, thirty years, superintendent parchment, I would think that you would do the right thing. Because we're trying to teach our kids to do the right thing, even when people are not looking. Well, I don't know about you. I know that a couple of you are educators on the board. So I know that when I do things, I try to make sure that all of the things in my actions speaks to the values that I hold true. And I would hope that the board would reconsider doing something to the former president, James Vickery. He had every right to speak out to what was happening to him and his family. Putting a face of a bullseye, that's not appropriate at all. So if you do something, I'm telling you, I think that he has a very strong case because all of you, some of you know him. You served with him. And he's a good man, and he does not need to be treated this way. And you've worked with him over the years. And just really quick, I just wanna thank board member Dimitrios for being very honest on his financial disclosure.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public? Is there anybody online? Okay, let's go with it.
Good afternoon, Cassine Gaines. Speaking today, unfortunately, because once again, Mr. Meehan speaks without knowing very much about what he speaks about. I just wanna point out for the public a few things. Number one, as Mr. Meehan did acknowledge, I am an employee of the Hackensack Public Schools. And my understanding is that there is a policy wherein if people stand at that microphone and speak ill of employees of the Hackensack Public Schools by name, that that is not allowable, that that is in violation, and that those individuals should or could be barred from speaking further at subsequent public meetings for being in violation of that policy. That is number one. Number two, I do also want to acknowledge for the public the double standard that Mr. Meehan seems to have no problem with, wherein elected officials throughout the city of Hackensack have endorsed Board of Education candidates for the last five years, sending out municipal flyers using their title as elected officials in the city of Hackensack, including the individual that Mr. Meehan is speaking in defense of today, who was endorsed by the current mayor of Hackensack. And I'm not saying that to say that there's a problem with it. I'm just saying I have a problem with the double standard that seems to be put forth by Mr. Meehan. I also want to acknowledge the support of the school community, which I think any school community should have for any one of its educators who are running to serve this community. We have a very long history of people who are employees of the Hackensack Public School who have served the community in various capacities, whether it be through community organizations, whether it be formerly as deputy mayor of Hackensack, as council people in Hackensack, and I'm not going that far back in our city's history. To say that there is a problem or a conflict with the school system being supportive of its staff, I think speaks something to the previous culture of this school district. And I appreciate an effort to try and actually show the staff that there is some level of support, not just for me, but one of the things that I advocate for as president of the association is that the school board should be showing all of its staff, all of it, respect and support regardless of whatever affiliations perceived are real. Thank you very much.
Anyone else online? At this time, public session is now closed. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education determines it necessary to meet an executive session on Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, to discuss personnel matters and pending or anticipated contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that these matters will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
A second? Motion by trustee Stein, second by trustee Amrahamsa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, just so that the public is aware, we will be back out to vote on a few agenda items. We will notify the public when we're getting closer to come out. I don't wanna give a time yet. Okay, thank you.
Here, here, the games are here.
All right. I can have a motion to reopen to the public session, please. A motion by trustee Pringle, second by trustee Carol. Ms. Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Present.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Present.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Pringle.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, were you taking the attendance or were you taking the vote on the motion?
Attendance.
Oh, yes. Because you all said present, not yes.
Yeah.
So. Some could say present just means I'm here, but I'm not voting. Can we just do the roll call again with a yes or no or abstain?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Pringle.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, were you taking the attendance or were you taking the vote on the motion?
Attendance.
Oh, yes. Because you all said present, not yes.
Yeah.
So. Some could say present just means I'm here, but I'm not voting. Can we just do the roll call again with a yes or no or abstain?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes, for the second time.
We have a. The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are open to the public. It is eight oh two. Okay, so we're going to start off with our agenda, page two, line item number five.
I would like to make a motion for agenda item Roman numeral five, RSP twenty five dash oh six, independent investigation. Whereas bids were solicited and opened by the Hackensack Board of Education on June twelfth, twenty twenty five, at ten a.m. for the independent investigation as to the usage of Hackensack High School by the former Board of Education's president on December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, to determine if any New Jersey laws and/or internal policies and/or regulations were violated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools and school business administrator slash board secretary, approves to award the contract to the law offices of John McCann for legal services in the amount of one hundred eighty dollars per hour for attorneys and one hundred fifty five dollars per hour for paralegal services, paid from account number that is here for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from trustee Amherhamza. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carol. Ms. Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Line item number six, trustee Amherhamza.
I would like to make a motion to offer for consideration of Roman numeral six. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, approves to rescind the appointment of Jacenia Buda Howell on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting as the affirmative action officer for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Okay, thank you, trustee Amherhamza. So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Gilmore. Ms. Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Present.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Pringle.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, were you taking the attendance or were you taking the vote on the motion?
Attendance.
Oh, yes. Because you all said present, not yes.
Yeah. Oh.
So. Some could say present just means I'm here, but I'm not voting. Can we just do the roll call again with a yes or no or abstain?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes, for the second time.
We have a. The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are open to the public. It is eight oh two. Okay, so we're going to start off with our agenda, page two, line item number five.
I would like to make a motion for agenda item Roman numeral five, RSP twenty five dash oh six, independent investigation. Whereas bids were solicited and opened by the Hackensack Board of Education on June twelfth, twenty twenty five, at ten a.m. for the independent investigation as to the usage of Hackensack High School by the former Board of Education's president on December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, to determine if any New Jersey laws and/or internal policies and/or regulations were violated. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools and school business administrator slash board secretary, approves to award the contract to the law offices of John McCann for legal services in the amount of one hundred eighty dollars per hour for attorneys and one hundred fifty five dollars per hour for paralegal services, paid from account number that is here for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from trustee Amherhamza. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carol. Ms. Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Line item number six, trustee Amherhamza.
I would like to make a motion to offer for consideration of Roman numeral six. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, approves to rescind the appointment of Jacenia Buda Howell on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting as the affirmative action officer for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
Okay, thank you, trustee Amherhamza. So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Gilmore. Ms. Augusta, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Yes.
On to page three of our agenda, line item seven, trustee Pringle.
I would like to make a motion for line item, well, I'm sorry, for agenda item seven. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, designate Rosemary Marks Assistant Superintendent as affirmative action officer for the school year twenty five, twenty six.
Okay, thank you, trustee Pringle. That was a motion for trustee Pringle. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Stein. Ms. Augusta, roll call, please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to line item number eight, trustee Stein, vice president Stein.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for item, Roman numeral item eight, to approve the hiring of voter R. HR solutions in the human services consultation for Hackensack Public Schools at a rate of two hundred and seventy five dollars per hour, not to exceed a hundred and forty hours, for a total of thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion from trustee Stein. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Martin. Ms. Augusta, roll call, please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Abstain.
Ms. Amherhamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, excellent. Line item number nine, trustee Gilmore.
Okay, I'd like to bring for consideration agenda item nine. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, the Hackensack Board of Education approves to award the contract to Kelly Services Incorporated from Exhibit A, MPP dash E S Y dash Para Professional for a bill rate of thirty one dollars and one cents per hour to provide extended school year paraprofessional services and job coach bill rate.
Here, here, the game's over here.
All right, can I have a motion to reopen to the public session, please?
I'm on motion.
Motion by trustee Pringle, second by trustee Carol. Ms. Aghastra, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Present.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Present.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Pringle.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry, just to be clear, were you taking the attendance or were you taking the vote on the motion?
Attendance.
Oh, yes. Cause you all said present, not yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
So. Some could say present just means I'm here, but I'm not voting. So can we just do the roll call again with a yes or no or abstain?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes, for the second time.
We have a. The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are open to the public. Um, it is eight oh two. Okay, so we're gonna start off with our agenda, page two, line, uh, item number five.
Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, for agenda item, uh, Roman numeral five, RSP twenty-five dash O six, independent investigation. Whereas bids were solicited and opened by the Hackensack Board of Education on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. At ten AM for the independent investigation as to the usage of Hackensack High School. By the former Board of Education's president on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. To determine if any New Jersey laws and or internal policies and or regulations were violated. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools. And school business administrator slash board secretary. Approves to award the contract to the law offices of John McCann for legal services in the amount of one hundred eighty dollars per hour. For attorneys and one hundred fifty-five dollars per hour for paralegal services. Paid from, uh, account number that is here, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from trustee Amor Hamza. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Carol. Ms. Aghastra, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Uh, line item number six, let's trustee Amor Hamza.
Um, I would, I'd like to make a, a motion to offer for consideration of Roman numeral six. Uh, be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools. Approves to rescind the appointment of Gysenya Buda Howell. On May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting as the affirmative action officer for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Okay, thank you trustee Amor Hamza. So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by trustee Gilmore. Ms. Aghastra, can you please do a roll call?
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah. On to page three of our agenda, line item seven, trustee Pringle.
I would like to make a motion for line item, well, I'm sorry, for agenda item seven. Um, be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools. Designates Rosemary Marks Assistant Superintendent as affirmative action officer for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, thank you trustee Pringle. That was, uh, motion for trustee Pringle. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Stein. Ms. Aghastra, roll call please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to line item number eight, trustee Stein, vice president Stein.
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion for, uh, item, Roman numeral item eight, uh. To approve, uh. The hiring of Vota R. HR solutions, uh, in the human services consultation. For Hackensack Public Schools at a rate of two hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour. Not to exceed a hundred and forty hours. For a total of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion from tr- trustee Stein. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Oh, second by trustee Martin. Ms. Aghastra, roll call please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Abstain.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to bring, um, for consideration, uh, agenda item nine. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, the Hackensack Board of Education approves to award the contract. To Kelly Services Incorporated from exhibit A, MPP dash E S Y. Dash paraprofessional for a bill rate of thirty-one dollars and one cents per hour to provide extended school year paraprofessional services. And job coach bill rate. Four, forty dollars and ninety-six cents per hour for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, thank you trustee Gilmore. So that was a motion from trustee Gilmore. Uh, can I have a second, please?
A second.
Second by trustee Pringle. Ms. Aghastra, roll call please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra.
Yes.
Ms. Amor Hamza.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
I recuse myself.
Ms. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Pringle.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and we just have, just want a clarification from our board attorney.
Yeah, I meant to say earlier when before, uh, after trustee Amir Hamzada, uh, moved, uh. Uh, agenda five, five. Um, it wasn't on the pre-printed agenda that may have been disseminated to the public because of the timeliness of when the RFP responses came in. Um, a resolution couldn't be prepared at that time to put it on the agenda. Which is why the board president had asked, uh, trustee Amir Hamzada. To read it in case any who's here or listening knew what the resolution was for. And it will of course be in the meeting minutes in case the public wants to go back and look at, look at it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this time, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by trustee Stein. Can I have a second? Second by trustee Pringle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, get home safe everyone. Have a good night. It's eight oh nine.